If I could call this meeting to order. And if I could ask Mr. Timniak to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if I could ask everybody to stay standing for a moment of silence. Our former fire chief, Richard Felmer, lost his son Bryant this past weekend. I'd ask you to keep the family in your thoughts for just a moment. All right, this is a public executive session for the Board of Selectmen to discuss our budget. There is no public comment, though certainly members of the board can ask questions to different department heads if they need to. We will, we have the opportunity here to discuss any items that we're looking at making adjustments to, to let the other board members know what's going on. But I also want to qualify that or clarify that the discussion today is not binding on tomorrow. We can discuss anything today or discuss nothing today and still make adjustments tomorrow if the board sees fit or members want to put those items forward. There may also be certain department heads that are requested to attend tomorrow if possible, and we'll either let you know during the course of this meeting or let Jennifer know so she can get out to the requested participants for tomorrow's session so folks will know ahead of time to attend. We're going to go through, discuss revenues, expenses, the Board of Ed, WPCA, and the salaries for the registrar of voters. We'll be voting on all those items tomorrow. And again, the board's not required to comment on them today, but this is an opportunity for us to comment or discuss those. So with that as a start, we've got some items that Ms. Gardner was good enough to compile during the discussions of the joint session, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. And if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to briefly go through those so that we can start, as that is a foundation.
Sure.
That sound okay?
Yep.
And as we go through these, the fact that they relate to one department or another doesn't keep us from talking about that department and specific line items later if we so choose. All right, from the top, looking at revenue specifically, there was a rental income potential adjustment from the Fairfield Theater Company, increasing it from $60,000 for the year to $64,000 for the year, which is a net positive $4,000 in revenue. Under finance and miscellaneous, there was an item of almost $9,899 in the budget recommendation that was using a three-year average. And unfortunately, that included a one-time item that came through a couple of years ago, coming out of the Sandy Hook incident. So we got some special money in through that that was included in that revenue item. If you strip that one-time occurrence out, the actual revenue for the year is, three-year average would be $250. So that's a $9,649 adjustment to the bad, lowering our revenue. Any questions on those two? Okay. Next up, going to expenses. We've got the registrar of voters item listed here for their salaries. Traditionally, we've done this at the Board of Finance level. This is the first year we're doing it at the Board of Selectmen level. Registrar Matt Wagner was looking through the state statutes and found out that the state statutes say that their salary should be set by the Board of Selectmen. So we haven't done it this way in the past, but since we have recently found out that the state statutes say to do it this way, we're going to follow state statute. You have in the handout that I gave you at the start of this meeting.
Yep.
A one-page item that gives you the voters, registrar voter's salary history. And you can see on here for the last almost 10 years, both their part-time salary, also a seasonal stipend that was being awarded to our registrars. You can see the individual increases for their salary year to year, as well as the total increases when you add in the stipend. So I realize you just got that. It's pretty straightforward, but please take time to review that. If there are any questions on that, we can ask finance tomorrow. But if there are any questions coming up that we want information for tomorrow's meeting, if you could get those to me tonight or first thing in the morning so we can give our finance guys the most time possible.
One thing I just was thinking about that I didn't ask the other night. I mean, what is, is there a set number of hours that they average? I know at different times of the year, they're busier.
It's a, it's a part-time job, so I believe they're limited to 19 and 1/2 a week. They do not get benefits. They do not get paid overtime. But I turned to finance and said, are there any other restrictions on this job other than that?
No, 19 and 1/2 is on an annual basis.
Okay, so they have to average less than 19 and 1/2 for the year.
Because like election weeks, they're going to work more.
Right.
Okay.
But perhaps during the summers, if they're, if not election year, not a primary year, there may be less hours that are required to put in. And we can get Matt and/or Roger here tomorrow if you'd like to have them as a resource. The stipend is something that I just found out about recently that's added in here, so I don't have any background on that. The salary piece is pretty straightforward, and going back to my days on the Board of Finance, that was one of the items we used to vote on every four years. So as much as it's listed in here, it's kind of in two-year increments. If my memory is correct, we used to vote on it once every four years with two, with a base to start and then an adjustment. So we basically approved four years' worth of salary. Does that make sense, the way I said that?
So the stipend, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The stipend at $2,500, that's, is that set anything in any sort of state statute or, I mean, anything along those lines, Mike?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
As I said, this is the first I became aware of it. I believe it's been in the budget, but I don't believe it's something that has been discussed in the budget as a separate item.
Well, I guess I'd like one of them to come tomorrow if we can discuss that with them unless they're here today, and I don't see them in the crowd.
Okay. Jennifer, we can make a note and we can probably, on any of these, let's try and get out this afternoon to them, and I'll help you make some of those calls to get out to folks so All right, and just, I do have a call into Tom Flynn, Chair of the Board of Finance, since they've dealt with this in the past. And as much as I've been on the Board of Finance in the past, I just don't remember this item. So I've got to call him to see if he has any other background.
Is this stipend times two, because there are two registrar voters?
It's per, yes, per person. The numbers listed there, I think, are per registrar. So it's 33,192 per registrar and $2,500 stipend per registrar for a total of $3,500, $692 per registrar. So if you look in the salary item on the opposite registrar voters, you should see twice that Next up, human active employee benefits. On the health insurance side, we were looking at making a move to the State Partnership 2.0. Frankly, it looked pretty straightforward at the time, and the Board of Ed teachers have approved it and are moving in that direction. As we're talking to our town employees and unions, as well as our retirees, what we're finding is that a couple of bargaining units are in favor, some want to deal with it later. A number of questions have come up that are all answerable, but it just takes a much more comprehensive communication effort. So I'm going to recommend that we change our budget to reflect not moving to Partnership 2.0 on July 1st. We've had, if we go back to our self-insured program that we're currently on, there are two impacts on that. One is we had a reduction in insurance in the proposed budget. We don't have to totally remove that entire dollar amount. Two things have happened. Our experience has been better over the last three months, so we're using best available information, which shows that it wouldn't cost as much as we had if we put this, as our estimates showed back in January. In addition, we've been able to negotiate a reduced cost from Anthem for staying on our current program. So as you can see here, if we stay in the current program, we'd have to make an adjustment to the budget of $297,534. Now, that would be an increase, but it is not the $700,000 increase that we had in there as a savings initially when we looked at that. And that's because of better information today than we had back in January.
So we originally had a $700,000 decrease to the budget because we were switching, and now it's essentially a $300,000 increase.
No, it's a, it's...
What's the net?
The net is a...
That's $300,000.
Increase to the current recommendation. So we don't have to increase it the full $700,000. We don't have to go back up about it, just under half. Because of improved experience and better pricing for me.
Negotiation.
So is that, is this conversation still going on about moving over to the Connecticut Partnership, or is this now off the table?
No. It's, we can, we can move to the, for the folks that want to, if we can do it, we can still move by July 1st. We also are able to move at any point during the year. So if those conversations take a little longer, we don't have to wait a whole year to do it. We can move during the year. So yes, we're going to still look at making the move because it's, it's a better program and it's lower cost for the same plan or better, and that's, that's hard to beat in this day and age.
Do we have new numbers from Aon reflecting this?
Yes.
Can I get them from you offline?
Yeah, I guess the simple idea, let's get those as soon as possible, but let's also, we'll probably want to step through those tomorrow when we're looking at this as a Any other questions on that before we move on?
No, I guess, so whereas we're still going to be saving money, but this, to the bottom line of the budget, this is going to be increasing what we were looking at.
This is an increase over the recommendation that's in the book.
Okay.
It's less money than we paid last year or would have projected back in January, but it is an increase to this recommendation.
Okay, just to be clear.
Next up, human resources. That's, they're two lines together, they're really a transfer. And Linda, can you fill us in on what that is? That's a transfer of $720 from one line to another line, so there's an increase in one and a decrease in another. The net effect is zero?
That's correct. It's, it's to reclassify where a cell phone is charged. There was a cell phone charge.
So that's going from special department to communications?
Communications. We created a communication line.
Okay.
They didn't have a communication line in the past.
This was the line before.
Next up, also two lines that should be taken together. We've traditionally had a Fairfield Veterans Advisory and Information Service that we made a contribution of $3,400 to. We're removing that dollar amount and removing that line and moving it over to our Human and Social Services Department. So it's the same dollar amount, so there's no effect on the budget, but they're going to be picking up the duties from the Veterans Advisory Group, which was really one woman, and she has, she was retired, but she's really retired now, and she stopped volunteering for this. And I think you heard Terry Gegenkac talk about this.
No, I got it, sorry.
Yes, during the session. Any questions on that? All right. Next up, private school bus transportation. And this is an expense, we had some discussion at the Board of Finance session about, we have clarified that session. There is a reduction of $10,000 and change, $10,357 due to better fuel costs. And I think to clarify, one of the questions at the Board of Finance level was, because fuel costs are such a big part of this line item.
Yep.
We were looking for a bigger decrease. And what happened is the, there was a miscalculation in last year. So in fact, when you look at the actuals from last year, the difference this year is nowhere near the size of the increase that we saw, and I think, Mr. Timniak, you were the one who questioned some of that at that time. So it's not an issue of the calculation in the current, in the fiscal '17 budget that's before us, but it is an issue that the numbers were not correct in the fiscal '16 budget, which led to that perceived increase there.
Is there a way to have a uniform decreased percentage in fuel costs for all departments who purchase fuel?
We do.
I see it fluctuating throughout the book.
It will, well, it'll fluctuate. There are two components. There's units and dollars per unit. All right, so in this case, what the department heads do is give us an estimate of their units. So if their usage is going to go up or to go down, that's one component of a change. The other component, which is standard for everybody in town and in the Board of Ed, is the cost per gallon. And those, those numbers, the cost numbers, are negotiated by the purchasing department. Those are sent out to all departments, and specifically Linda puts the same number in for all the departments.
Okay.
So the only, theoretically, the, from year to year, there might be a difference because of either component or both, but for, in comparison, any department within our, the only difference should be usage.
When was the last time you checked that number versus the fuel costs?
Probably last month.
Is there, is it, is it worth doing again so we can have an accurate number for tomorrow?
I'll be happy to do that for you.
Yeah, I believe in most cases, purchasing is buying on a contract price.
Well, part of it is based on contracts that have already been purchased, so that's not going to fluctuate. So it's not going to fluctuate much, if at all, but I will...
Yeah, no, it's mostly contract, contract.
How long do the contracts run?
These, today's...
December, some of them are through December of '17.
Somebody said December of '17.
So they're like yearly contracts?
Yes.
Well, kind of six months to a year, and basically purchasing is evaluating those as they start to run out to pick the best time to sign up for another contract based on what the best prices they can get, and also what the term they're looking for there. Okay, your questions?
Good.
Again, two items. It's a transfer, this is within the Finance Department. This is the $62,000 that was approved by the RTM last year that was stayed in the regular payroll line when it should have been transferred to fees and professional services because it's being used for contract labor. So this, in essence, is making that change in the fiscal '17 budget. Next up, under IT. There are two, two changes here. One, there was quite a bit of discussion about the backup center at Fairfield Woods Library and what was taking place there. And our IT department went out and determined that we can move our data center from Fairfield Woods Library and co-locate it in, not sure the location.
The Network Synergies Data Center.
All right. At Network Synergies Data Center. When they do that, we are then leasing that per month or paying a fee of $19,200. So compared to some of the costs that were being discussed at that point, this is a much more cost-effective solution.
What's the light, what's the issue with the library again? Sorry.
The current backup center's in the basement, and that's the one that takes the sump pumps to work, and we were talking...
Moisture, moisture, right.
Yeah. So the issue, I think it may have come up during non-recurring, is do we get a backup generator for that, or do we not get the backup generator and go with the $19,000 a year component here? There's also some discussion about combining the backup centers for the Board of Ed and Town. Do we build a separate building? There was a number of proposals that were evaluated, and $19,000 a year seemed to be much more cost-effective than the other options that were before.
And that's just for the Town side, not the Board of Ed computers?
On the IT capital, we've got a hundred, an adjustment here that nets to $140,000 for two servers. There was a proposal in the non-recurring for a server, approximately $150,000. It was pointed out during the RTM discussion on that item that in our bonding guidelines, we do not bond IT servers of this size. Even though it meets our capital requirements, it's, we're not bonding technology on that. So that was not approved at the RTM level during the discussion of non-recurring. However, we still need that server. What we're doing with that server is we're going to take it out of this year's contingency, fiscal 2016's contingency. However, that server was part of a three-year, actually two-year program for three servers. So that, if you looked on the waterfall chart, the idea was to put two servers in the non-recurring for next year. Since we can't do that, we're moving those to the operating budget. And that's where the $140,000 comes from. Two servers at $70,000 each. So you won't be seeing the larger server that was not approved and non-recurring because we're taking care of that in the current year.
Right.
However, looking forward, we still have to, to address the need for the other two servers.
So we're adding 140 to the proposed 2016-'17 budget?
Correct. Next up is another transfer from solid waste and recycling, from capital to maintenance and repair of buildings and grounds. So that's a net zero, but it's a $64,000 line item to line item transfer. Any questions or discussion on that? Then I'm going to take all these others items for the rest of the page and continuing through most of the next page that are labeled "Library." And those are all transfers from what we have now as one unified budget to taking it out of the main library budget and adding it to a separate budget that's been set up for Fairfield Woods Branch Library. There's no change in cost, they all net to zero, but they're going from one library to the other. And that was specifically a request of certain members of the Board of Finance.
They haven't actually voted to make this change, but just requesting the information to be made available.
Okay. That's a good point, and it may be something that we let them vote on, since it was their request.
Right.
We certainly can vote on it, but we're not required to vote on it. And it might, since that hasn't been a voting item for them, this lays it all out so they can. But as a board, we may choose, and that's something we can discuss further tomorrow.
Have we talked to the library about this? Karen Ronald?
Well, she was, has, was in our discussion. Karen Ronald was essential in helping put this together. I think the main concern on the library is the larger concern, not of how the numbers are reported, but is this an initiative to remove or close the Fairfield Woods Branch Library? Now, as much as the Chair of the Board of Finance said that hadn't been a public discussion, certainly certain members, it's my understanding there have been some private discussions, not in public session, about that. So the libraries, and certainly the trustees and supporters of the library are concerned about what the implication is here. From just a pure management reporting standpoint, knowing the cost, full cost of running a branch operation is a reasonable request.
Right.
And certainly in any private sector company, that would be something that you'd look at.
Yep.
But there's always a question here as to where the change is leading. So I think that's the, the question on that side. All right. Next up, unless there are any more questions on the library?
No.
Okay. Next up is the Board of Ed. And Linda, do you know if we have the updated health insurance information yet?
Not have it yet.
Okay. We are expecting to have by tomorrow updated health insurance for the Board of Education. We have updated information for the Town. We used that earlier on to make that adjustment I talked about to the Town Health Insurance.
Yep.
Okay. So we can't, the Town is in better shape or had better experience. They're independent, so one could have good experience, one can have bad experience, and over time, that's certainly been the case. So I don't need to, but as soon as we can get the Board of Ed updated insurance numbers, we'll have those, and hopefully we'll have those in time for our discussion tomorrow. Also, it was mentioned during the IT presentation that we can get a reduced number, cost number on the PCs that we were looking at. So I don't have that at the moment, but again, we'll try and get that number for tomorrow.
Is that the PCs the Board of Education was buying?
No, those are the PCs that Town IT Department's buying. And there was discussion about moving to virtual PCs.
Okay.
And could that help us? And if we were planning on doing that, how soon can we do that? And could that reduce the number of PCs we're buying in this year's budget? So we just need to get an update on that. And then if I turn the page, we have the last item, which is the Water Pollution Control Facility. As much as this is a separate item, and Chris, you know, you sit on the board, and they have a separate budget, and it is not funded by tax dollars, it's funded by sewer use fees. Because they have a separate budget, they still run on the same insurance program that we do. And because we've had an, an adjustment in our insurance program, if we're not going to the Partnership 2.0, we'd also have an adjustment here based on their experience and based on the cost of the Anthem program.
So is this in our budget or their budget?
It's in their, when you say their budget.
It's in their budget, but it's part of the overall budget.
It's in the last section here.
Got it.
All right, so it's not something that hits the general fund.
Right.
It's not something, this doesn't increase the mill rate.
Okay.
It's a function of sewer use fees. So the Water Pollution Control Facility is self-funded.
So will that mean increased sewer fees?
More than likely.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
There might be an error in the document. The, I think the 297, and I'll obviously confirm this for tomorrow, I think the 297 that you discussed earlier with respect to the healthcare is the entire difference that needs to be allocated.
Yeah. Okay, if you could do that. This 172 looks rather large for just the water pollution control facility.
Well, there's another reason for that, which is totally separate, but...
Okay.
But yeah, but I think that, I think there's, we need to do some work on this tonight.
All right, so if you have updated information on the Town Health Insurance that impacts both the overall Town and the WPCA, if you can have that available for us with some background to explain that tomorrow, that would be great. I don't mean to repeat everything you just said, but you're not on mic and I am, so I want to make sure anybody watching this gets the full explanation. so I want to make sure anybody watching this gets the full explanation. All right. All right. That's a list. Lynda, did I miss anything on there?
You did well. Beautiful.
Okay. That's the list of items that was drawn up based on our meetings jointly with the Board of Finance. Anything, any other items you all would like to discuss?
I'd like to ask, do we have any update from the state of Connecticut on their budget conversations right now, municipal aid?
We have a correspondence from CCM that talks about, I think there's a $90 million shortfall for this current year.
Bob, if you're going to respond, you've got to get up.
No, there is a microphone.
Is there a mic there?
He's got a mic.
I mean, he can do the podium if he wants to.
And it's expect, it's expected that there will be, it's anticipated that the legislature's going to be looking at municipal aid.
Yes.
Cuts. Both for this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
So no new information?
But no, no, no quantification.
Okay. Unless you've heard anything?
It's pretty much, I was hoping to get some information. I know they're supposed to have a budget vote tomorrow, which will give us an indication of what they're going to reduce for this fiscal year. My big concern is they're not talking about adding money right now to state capital to the municipal aid line.
I would, yes, I would be surprised.
Yes. They're, they're actually talking about reducing it, and that's something I think we have to factor in to our budget decisions moving forward, not just for this body, but as information becomes available to the Board of Finance 48 hours after we vote in the RTM, you know, a month or so after that.
Yeah, we have until May 7th to get all the information. That's, I think, the vote date for the Board of Finance, and that's when they set the mil rate. And they can take all this information into account. So we keep tracking and documenting, doing the best we can.
Yeah.
On all these things.
Everything, yeah, everything I've heard says the state is not going to decide by April 30th what's going on, or by tomorrow what's going on. So, but they keep talking about municipal aid is on the table, so you're absolutely correct.
Right. Well, I think that, like, we plan for, you know, our revenue estimates for other departments. I think that's something we have to plan for as well. And then the, the health insurance number, we're looking to get the adjusted information from Aon for tomorrow?
No, what I, what I think is, and I should have caught this sooner, the total town cost, including WPCA, I think is the 397.
297.
Excuse me, 297. So tomorrow, when we give you a new number, or new numbers, basically, there's two things that have gone on. One, we have better information from experience. And two, I've held discussions with Anthem, and we've got some cost relief.
Okay.
The combination of the two, the gross savings, I think, is $340, or $39,000. 15% of that is borne because of the cost share, the premium share by the employees. So that makes it net, it's the $297,000. That's for the total. I'm going to confirm this tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure I'm talking correctly. And that 297 will then be separated between the town and the WPC.
WPCA.
WPCA.
So based upon this recommendation here, tomorrow, we're looking to add back in $446,000?
That's incorrect.
That would be on this one, but that's going to, it's going to be lower than that.
In total, it will be the 297, split between the two funds.
Okay. So ballpark, like, $300,000, $350,000?
Well, the total, well, you'll vote on both. The total of the bulk will be 300. And the breakout, when we were speaking earlier, the reason that there's a higher-than-anticipated percentage of savings going to, or percentage of additional cost, or percentage of reduced savings, I think would be the best way to say it, going to the.
WPCA.
WPCA. Is because normally, we budget based upon a blended rate, but the state rates come, came out in tiered rates. And because different union contracts and because of different times that people start and start employment here, some people in the same department are in different contracts, different start dates. So some people are blended, some people are tiered. Historically, we've always done blended, but when the state came in, WPCA was switched to tiered. Probably shouldn't have, probably should have been consistent. So we're switching it back to blended stuff. So we're adjusting the, the method back to standard practice, and we're updating the numbers.
Okay.
Any other comments? Questions, anything else you all would like to discuss at this time?
No, I would, I would like to spend a couple minutes with our CFO of the town after this meeting, if I can.
Okay. That's not a Board of Select question.
I know.
Anything else for the Board of Select?
No.
Okay. Lori, anything on your side?
No, not really.
Okay. Then with that, there is no public comment today, so simply put, Mr. Mayor, anything else we should discuss or?
Well, the only other two items, I'm not sure, because I've been in the room for a little while, you've got the Board of Assessment Appeals going on, and you have the motor vehicle tax issue going on.
Would you like to give us an update on either of those?
Board Assessment Appeals, as of this morning, there was 258 cases filed. 160 have been processed. The average discount given is about 9.2%. And if it, if that carries through, the grand list impact will be?
Total $18,000, a change of $10,000.
I don't know. No, no, just the dollar number on the, on the budget.
Go through the 1181 reductions.
I don't know. What's the, times the 25 bucks?
Got it. $273,000.
$273,000.
Okay, but are they still meeting today on us?
For another week?
Yes, they have nine, they've done 160, there's 258, they have 100 to go.
So we won't have complete information until next week?
Exactly. Until, until April. But the, but the 273 isn't just based upon the 160, it's based upon extrapolating the cases settled to date over the entire population. So that would require a revenue increase, a tax revenue increase of $273,000 to make up for the grand list reduction.
Because that's revenue, that's where you say we typically do that, when, the night we're setting the mil rate, when we know what the additional revenue that has to be raised is.
Correct. We'll know by then, it'll be financed by then. And then with the motor vehicle situation, I reported to the Joint Committee, I think, that we were looking at $560,000, $570,000 as a maximum risk because the 2,093 vehicles we have, we've done some cleaning out of that. Our maximum risk now is $406,000. I talked to, I talked to the State Motor Vehicle Department today, and we actually went through, looked at some cars, and A, statistics can't tell the answer, B, it appears that some of those cars, even though they have wrong addresses, they have non-Fairfield addresses, really should have Fairfield addresses. But it's, so the maximum, though, is adjustment that would have to be made if we, if none of those were Fairfield, and if there were no Fairfield cars in other towns that we would pick up, there would be another adjustment to the grand list that would result in a required additional taxes to be collected, $406,000.
So that, just to summarize, and just for anybody who hasn't been keeping up with all this, frankly, the state royally screwed up the motor vehicle tax list. I don't know any other way to say that. So this is not a Fairfield problem. This is a 169-town-in-Connecticut problem. So everybody else is going through the same thing we are. They hope to have it completed by May or June of this year, which unfortunately for our timing is well after we vote on the budget. Every other town in Connecticut is in the same fix, in the same vote. Mr. Mayor's been working with DMB to clarify as much as we can to get us close enough so we have the best available information, but we will not have complete information, and we will not have a sign-off on our situation until, again, most likely after we vote, based on everything I've heard or everything I've seen written in the newspapers around the state. So, Mr. Mayor, if you can get us as updated information as you can tomorrow. I have, for my colleagues, I have a call into the Chair of the Board of Finance on the Board of Assessment Appeals, and probably should include this in the discussion, just to see, see if we can work in concert in terms of whether they want to handle some of these adjustments, or we can. They may have better information by Thursday. I know it's only 48 hours later, but we're literally getting updates daily on some of this.
I don't anticipate running another, it takes time to run another, but I was going to wait, right now, I'm just planning to do it Thursday morning, or the Thursday afternoon.
Thursday evening meeting for the Board of Finance. So if we can talk a little bit more about that tomorrow, I'll try and elate my conversation with Mr. Flynn when we have a chance to talk tomorrow to see how we can work together on that and potentially what our false armor would help out. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to go back to that, if I can. So I had those three numbers up, and it was about $900,000 in essentially new money which we'll have to tax.
Four plus 273 is seven.
Yeah.
And then what's the other two?
I had, I rounded 300 for the town budget adjustments to 400.
Oh, including, including the, yes, yes.
And then 200 for the Assessment Appeals or so, roughly around there. What, so $900,000.
Which is, which is roughly the number, I think Mr. Flynn summarized at the last Board of Finance meeting that we participated in.
If you had, if you want to add money for state aid.
Yeah, and money for state aid too, which we don't know about that. So we're probably over $1 million on the proposed budget or what actually needs to happen.
A million-dollar change would increase the mil rate to 2566.
It's 2557 now.
Yes.
Which would be a tax levy increase of 1.54%, budget increase of 1.43%.
Yeah, I have it. I'm going to let everybody know I'm an advocate for finding offsets for this in the budget instead of passing it off to the taxpayers. I think this is time to sharpen the pencil here. This is what, we've got a lot to do. I'd like to sit down and go over a couple ideas I have about trying to offset this increase.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions at this time? All right, well, thank you both. Thank you all for attending, and our next session where we will vote starts at 2:00 tomorrow afternoon. And you got the requests, you can jump.